Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank you for coming to our agenda meeting. For the record, tonight is Wednesday, April 27th, and the time is 7:00. Tonight, we have a public hearing on three issues, and we will move on with that, understanding that this is a listening session. All decisions will be made next week at a legislative session, which will be on Tuesday night. The first item we need to do, of course, is go into public hearing. Does the Chair here motion to go into public hearing?
Senator.
Second.
It's been moving in cycle to go into public hearings. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate yourself as saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Accordingly, we're in public hearing. The first item is a public hearing to receive comments on the consideration of a request for an application for a permit for a street event for a Nashville elementary. A 5K, a one-mile run in Kidd Dash should be held September 10, 2016. This is an item that the elementary folks have asked us to do to raise revenue for their playground they're trying to expand, which is already under construction. They have submitted to us all of the proper applications, the route of the travel for the race. We've got clearance from the police department, and everything seems to be in order. We just need now hearings from the general public, as it is a special activity. Is anyone from the general public who has anything to say for or against this issue? Anyone in the council anything to say for or against this issue? If not, we will let that go until Tuesday. Next item B is a special use unit, special use activity concerning zoning, which is a public hearing to receive comments on the consideration of a request to rezone property located 1139 Old Bailey Highway from A1 Agricultural Zoning District to I-1 Industrial Special Use Zoning District. This parcel contains approximately 37 acres and is identified by the Nash County Tax Parcel This issue is not to be confused with the third item we have to hear. This is a legislative issue. The third item is a quasi-judicial issue, which will have to approach from another direction. So, let's try not to get these two things confused. One's dealing with rezoning, and one's dealing with special use. Now, before we move forward in the public hearing, I'd like to ask our planning director, if he'd give us an update on this and how this differs from the previous request.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a special use rezoning from A1 to I-1 special use, and what that really means is that the applicant is requesting that we change the zoning district to I-1 for the sole purpose of a solar farm. So, that's what this is. It's not a general rezoning to anything allowed in I-1. It's solely for solar farm.
Solely for... Okay. So, one specific zoning issue?
Right.
Okay. Excellent. Does anyone from the general public have anything to say for or against this issue? If so, you come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record. All of this is being recorded, by the way.
Thank you. This is Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, pardon me, Mr. Mayor. I didn't mean to diminish you. My name is Tony Bachelor, a resident of Nashville a long time ago. My brother Tim is with me. Our dad handled a drugstore on Main Street for a lot of years, and some of you knew him.
And what is your address, sir?
It is 8800 202 Stockbridge Circle in Raleigh. 27615.
Thank you.
I rise to speak in opposition to the rezoning request. We have a contiguous piece of land to this. It's only contiguous in a rather small way, but nevertheless, it adjoins it. We think that the proposed amendment or change in the zoning would diminish our property value. It's approximately 78 acres, and that's the crux. Be glad to take any questions if you wish.
So, you know, the council, have any questions or comments? Anyone on the planning board have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there others who would like to speak on this issue? You'll approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and the planning board. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney here tonight representing the applicant. My address is 100 North Green Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that we would like to walk through, and we have several folks here with us tonight who are going to speak during both the rezoning and the special use permit hearing. And we have some booklets that we have put together that will use portions of the booklet for the rezoning and portions for the special use. So, we will keep them separate, of course. May we go ahead and set up our PowerPoint while I hand out the booklets?
How much time are you talking about?
Maybe about 20 minutes.
Okay. With all that done, now we've got the jargon to be clarified, continue, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could get you to, if you want to follow along in the booklet that I have given you, the PowerPoint that we're going to show is behind tabs seven. Tabs six and seven are the only two tabs that are involved in the rezoning. Tab six is a letter that is done by one of our experts addressing some future land use issues. Can I get the next slide, please, Mike? Our team here tonight, myself, Michael Wallace, who is running the PowerPoint right now, who's with Sunlight Partners, Rich Kirkland. Rich, you identify yourself. He's a licensed appraiser. Tommy Cleveland, who's a solar engineer, and our property owner, Mr. William Clark, is here as well. Next tab, please. The reason we're here, this particular piece of property is zoned agricultural. Your solar zoning ordinance, which you adopted in February of last year, requires solar farms to be an industrially zoned property. So, that is why we're here. Next tab. This shows, this is your current zoning map, and you can see X is on the site, or the X is on the piece of property that we're talking about, and you can see that that is currently zoned agriculture. We have been here before, as some of you may remember. We were here last year, and we learned a lot last year and have been trying to really work to make sure that this project fits with your future for your town. And one of the things that we learned at the hearing last year was that the staff really did not feel like they could support the rezoning because... If you turn to the next slide, please. This particular piece of property, the future land use map for this piece of property calls for it to be high-density residential. And so, that was really, I think that, if I recall correctly, and I'm sure Brian will correct me if I leave anything out, but he really had two main concerns. One was that the future land use was supposed to be high-density residential instead of industrial. And then, second, that there were a number of other industrial uses that could potentially have gone on this property if it were rezoned industrial besides a solar farm, and he was concerned about that. And those are certainly both legitimate concerns. We've addressed one of them right up front tonight. As you heard, Brian said this is a specific rezoning. It's not a general rezoning, and we're asking you to rezone it to industrial only for the use of a solar farm. So, you will not have to worry about any other industrial uses that could potentially be there, should you choose to rezone this. It would just be a solar farm would be the only thing that could be there. So, we've done our best to address that one. And we really feel like that we've done a lot of homework on Nashville and your future land use plan, and I've met with your staff since then to try to make sure that we understand your concerns. And in the course of that homework, we really focused on two things. One was, if it was the intention of the town through their ordinance that solar farms go into industrial zoning, would that be possible? You know, and we really, Mike Wallace in particular, really did a lot of homework on looking at your other industrially zoned land to see if it would be possible to take this project and put it in one of those spots. And his conclusion, which he'll go over in detail with you, is that unfortunately, it's not. There aren't any, none of your currently existing zoned industrial lands will work for a solar farm, and Mike will go into great detail with you about why that is. The other thing that we did a lot of homework on is your future land use plan and really how Nashville might grow in the future. You know, we looked over 40 years over the life of the lease of the solar farm. And Rich Kirkland, our appraiser, we asked him to look at population growth, statistics, and how communities such as Nashville tend to grow, what type of mix of housing you tend to use. And his conclusion is, is that you will have plenty of land for multifamily growth without this parcel. This particular parcel will represent less than 3% of your available land, and so you won't come anywhere close in the next 40 years to needing this land for multifamily. One other additional thing that, you know, he can elaborate on a little more. If you look at the slide here, the light blue where the X is, is the area designed for high-density residential. In both Rich's experience as an appraiser, in my experience as a zoning attorney, it's a little unusual to see all the high-density zoning in a town in one area. It just doesn't naturally develop or occur like that. You might have a cluster of two or three apartment complexes or condos, but you don't typically see them all in one area of town because, you know, when private business people come in and they want to develop these kind of things, they look for sites that they think will be attractive to people to live in, and those typically are not all in one part of town. So, that was something that we noticed kind of right away, was it was a bit unusual to have it all together. So, that, in our mind, was another reason why, you know, rezoning this property to this use would be a good zoning decision. The last thing Rich is going to talk about is, he's looked at over 200 solar farm sites in North Carolina, and in his experience, less than 5% of them are either on industrial land or near industrial land. The vast majority of them, 95% or so, are in either residentially zoned areas or agriculturally zoned areas. And he can elaborate, you know, the reasons why he typically sees that. And then, Tommy Kirkland is going to come up and talk to you just briefly about solar farms, what they are, and how they're safe. He'll go into a lot more detail in the special use permit part, but this is just an overview here. And then, finally, Mr. Clark is going to come up and talk to you about his feelings as the property owner and why he's supportive of this. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Wallace and let him come up and talk about the solar farms and where they can go.
Thank you, Michael. Michael Wallace, 27 Pearl Street, Portland, Maine, representing Sunlight Partners tonight. I'd like to thank the council and the planning staff who came out tonight. Appreciate that. What we really wanted to talk about, as Michael had said, is we spent a lot of time after our meeting trying to say, okay, if this site could not go where we have proposed, could it go in the industrial? And that was our prime mission, was to say, all right, they brought that forward. So, the way Sunlight, and I suspect a lot of the other solar companies work their property, there's a special software called, that we use called MapSearch. MapSearch is a GIS-related software that pulls up every substation in the state of North Carolina. It'll pull it up on a Google Earth-type image as well as every single transmission line, both distribution and transmission from 0 to 69 KV, from voltage all the way up to 230. So, we took that data. We mapped out the substations around the town of Nashville. There are two. One sits kind of up to, I would say, the north, more on the north side of things. It's approximately 3, 3 and 1/2 miles away. The other one sits to the west that runs probably somewheres in the 7 to 10 mile distance. So, those are the substations we knew that we were submitting on to. So, that's the first step. Do we have substations? Second step, do we have usable land? So, 25 acres or better. So, for Sunlight, we select 25 acres to 35 acres typically for our sites, for a 5-megawatt site, which is the proposal for this site. And you'll see this site was proposed at 25 to 26 acres to get that on there. That's criteria number two. And then, criteria number three is, is the land usable? So, we'll go through and do a detailed search of environmental impacts. Is there anything from over the past 100 years or beyond where we might have underground storage tanks that could have affected the soil? We could have had anything from, any type of process that may have had dumping or something like that on the facility, anything related to wetlands, any type of endangered species that may be in the area. We check all that out. And then, we scrub finally for floodplains, wetlands, things like that. So, once we've met that criteria, our next step is to go to Duke. So, when we go to Duke, we say, you know, we've got, we show an aerial of the site. We talk about the size of the site, the latitude and longitude of where the interconnection point we would propose, and we submit that, and we wait for their response. So, Duke has given us a response back on that site back in 2012 for Clayton Solar for this. So, then, we said, okay, if we're not going to do it for this site, if we're going to look at other sites, let's go ahead and move forward. So, Clayton Solar, again, was vetted by Sunlight in 2012. That's when we went through our initial process, did those initial checks. Okay. We hit the, the lease agreement was signed with Mr. William Clark in March 29th of 2013. We submitted our interconnect action, application in November, December of 2014, and I'm sure you guys have all heard through the news that this is the queue process, Duke's queue process. It typically takes a project anywhere from a year to two years to come out of queue. Our project, this one that we're presenting tonight, is still in the queue, just finishing up the impact study. It's been in there for about 18 months. And then, kind of the last thing that we wanted to talk about was the town of Nashville ordinance for solar was approved in 2015. So, really, the point of saying that was the solar site, and we've adhered to the Nashville solar ordinance, but that was, other than the industrial use permit, that was planned long before that ordinance had gone into place. Mike, you can go to the next slide and hit it one more time. So, what you see up on the map now, this is your industrial site. So, I'd like to point out to the west, there's a highlighted yellow section, and then to the far east, there's a highlighted yellow section, and you'll see Clayton Solar are proposed. All the way up in the right-hand corners, the north, you see the substation. That is the substation Duke has identified for the town of Nashville for a solar farm. So, Mike, you can go ahead and hit it again. So, you can see we call out an east and a west side. Hit it one more time. And then, you see where those areas are, they're all in the X. And this is information that I can provide, Brian. So, I went out and I said, I'm going to take the farthest western site. I'm going to submit that to Duke. Duke will do what they call a pre-application, where they'll go through, and they'll tell you the size of the substation, what feeder you're going to be on. They'll tell you who else is on the feeder and how much capacity is left, how far you are away from the substation, as well as how far you are away from three-phase heavy conductor, which is needed. So, for those areas in X that are black there, those are all over five miles away from the substation. And more importantly, the five-mile number typically is a turning point. So, if we can be under five miles, that's a good thing. We may be able to work with it. Once you get over five miles, you start to see the interconnect costs go up. So, what does that mean? Typically, a good interconnect cost for us is somewhere around $250,000 and under. Once you get over the five-mile range, you can be from $250,000, and I take you now, I can show evidence, up to $2 million. So, over two, once you get into those numbers, the project is no longer economically feasible. So, for everything that's in the X, there is no three-phase heavy conductor getting back to that substation, so there would be over five miles of reconducting. So, that, again, would kick the project out. Mike, if you hit it again. So, these areas are inside the town limits. Two things affect these areas. One, for Sunlight Partners, we would never propose to put a solar farm this close into the town. Too many things are going on. We feel the space is used for other things from solar. Those particular three spots are too small. They are not of the 25 acres of open land plus that we would need to get a solar farm on. Go ahead, Mike. The areas you see in the green there are already developed. So, those are areas that we could not get a solar farm on because there's already development. And next one, Mike? The areas in red, so these were our leading candidates of areas that we thought would possibly work. The area all the way over to the east, you can see, closest to the substation. So, by theory, that would be our best route with Duke, which is true. Well, when you go and do your initial pre-check on, remember, we talked about environmental wetlands and hazards? That site to the right has a pond and stream that runs up the back of it that cuts out our usable acreage down under 20 acres. So, it would not work for us, for our farm. And the same thing with the two properties to the left of Clayton Down. There's a pond there, and there's a stream that make those properties unusable to get the full 25 acres. So, what that told, what that tells us is that even if I wanted to put something in the industrial, I wouldn't be able to do so because it doesn't meet the criteria for a solar farm. So, it's just a case of why I still believe the site we picked has some good qualities that we'd like you to consider. Go ahead, Mike. So, again, this is kind of talking a little more about the two sites. So, again, I sent the east and the west off to Duke to get results back. You can see the substation is rated for 25 MVA, same rating on both substations. That's how we know it's the same substation. You can see the distance apart, 3.4 miles, acceptable. 5.21, close, close. The issue at 5.31 of reconducting, that's going to cost a fortune. If you think about utility, you often run brand-new lines all the way through there. So, that would not work. The other thing that's very important is you see the feeder capacity. So, typically, within a Duke system, the feeders are rated for anywhere between 10 and 20 MVA. We'll assume a worst-case scenario, 20 MVA. So, at that 20 MVA number, if you look at, Duke provides who else is on the queue. So, who else has submitted to have a solar farm in the substation? And for you all on this substation, it ends up being people kind of west, east, and north up in Nash County that are already on the solar farm. That caused the existing feeder capacity to be 114%. So, what does that mean? It means that anybody that was not into the queue prior is not going to, is not going to be able to have anything else in the queue, whether it's solar, whether it's biofuel that they're burning to make electricity. It means that that substation is full. So, the only way they can get any more capacity on it is if somebody comes in and spends serious capital to operate the substation. So, we're talking a couple of million dollars to do that. So, that would put that out. Why that's important is because Clayton Solar went into this queue application process back in 2014 of December, November. So, our project is safe because we're one of the ones that got in in time to be under that 114%. So, I guess the point being is, the industrial will not work for what we're trying to do with solar, the existing, and the substation now is over, is full and will not work. So, this is the one shot for the town of Nashville to be able to have a project like this in solar. And then, there's some other attributes on why we think solar is kind of a friendly environment and some things that we'll talk about a little bit later. Mike, so you can hit the next one, Phil.
Good evening. My name is Rich Kirkland. My address is 9408 Northfield Court, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm a state-certified appraiser. I'm also an MAI, and I've been working in commercial real estate in the area for the last 20 years. I was asked to look at this property as far as looking at population growth in Nash County and Nashville in particular, but also looking at, you know, how much land is going to be needed to support that growth. This is sort of the reverse of what I normally do, looking at supply-demand for commercial or subdivision use. Typically, you're looking to see, you know, how quickly is an apartment complex likely to fill up, or how quickly a subdivision's going to sell out. So, you're saying, you know, how quickly is the population growth going to be there? In this case, I'm sort of measuring the opposite. I was looking at projected population growth, looking out to 2060, and trying to figure out how much land was needed to support that growth. Let me catch up on the thing here. Right here, this is the future zoning for Nashville. I was looking at that to identify areas that showed the high-density residential versus low-density residential, and using that for projections I'll be doing on the next slide, I guess. Looking at the projection for population in Nashville, just using census data projecting forward, we're looking at 11,900, a little over 6,000 over the next 40 to 50 years. And so, that was the baseline population growth I was looking at. Next slide, please. So, this is kind of hard to read, but what I've done is I've looked at, again, just using the last census data, looking at typical household size. Essentially, the projected growth, I'm looking at 6,000 people. Typical house in Nashville, and this is zip code, 2.37 people per household. So, you divide that, and that tells you how many housing units you're going to need over that period of time. And to that, I've added another 5%. For a healthy residential market, you're going to need some frictional vacancies so you can have some room between spaces and also just to allow for some additional spikes in growth. So, that comes up with that 2,000, and I can't read that far away. Let me find it in the report. 2,658 units would be needed over that next approximately 50 years. And so, what I've looked at is looking at the breakdown of how much land's needed to support that. I've looked at it based on the current breakdown of how many single-family housing is in Nashville versus duplexes and quads and versus townhome or apartments or higher density. If I use the current ratio of what exists, it looks out that you need about 902 acres of land to support that mix of residential uses. But the projections for Nashville really show a shifting towards slightly higher density residential, and that's a trend nationally. So, I also did a second calculation underneath that, showing a mild increase in the amount of higher density, and that shows about 781 acres. So, that's really the range, 780 to 900 acres is really where I would expect what you need to support that population growth. Next slide. And this is a breakdown, just illustrating how much land is in Nashville for these different categories, and the breakdown is showing how much is developed already and how much is available for future development. And included in there is also, at the bottom, is the industrial zoning, just for, I guess, comparison. So, on the next slide, this is where I just do the breakdown of the available acreage I could find for each of the different uses. Again, industrial zoning is shown in there just for reference. I was really looking at the different categories for high residential, medium, and low, and just projecting forward how many units could be supported on those. Going across the available land I've found, and this is not including any redevelopment land, because over the next 40, 50 years, I would expect that you're going to have some redevelopment of some sites where you have one house sitting on, say, four acres or something where it gets redeveloped into more. I didn't consider anything like that. So, this number should be low, but your available land can support over 18,544 new population, new growth. And again, the subject property is using up roughly about 3% or so of that potential. So, it really should have a negligible result. This is still at 18,000 growth potential. That's significantly higher than the 6,500 you're in need for the next 40 to 50 years. So, I don't really see an impact on your growth potential for Nashville through this project. This slide just shows a number of solar farms that are actually in Nash County that I've looked at. These are all out in the county and around in other towns, but list to the right, the zoning for each of these. You can see that most of these are zoned in agricultural areas with a couple zoned for residential use. And this is consistent with what I've seen across North Carolina. I've sort of done a breakdown, looking at visiting over 200 solar farms across North Carolina, and I've broken down all the adjoining uses around them, looking at the number of acres next to it, as well as the number of parcels. Whether you look at it by the number of adjoining parcels, the most common use next to a solar farm is residential. If you look at it by acreage, the most common use next to a solar farm is agricultural. They're really being located in these areas where there's a certain amount of transition between towns and fields where you have open space available for solar farms, but you also have nearby power users who would use electricity generated thereby. So, I do find that this is a typical location for this, and that I think, as Mike said earlier, looking at zonings and locations, a very small minority of the solar farms in North Carolina are actually in or around industrial projects, certainly less than 10% or in commercial or anything less than agricultural residential zoning. And as far as the question, as far as impact on values, I think I could be going into that more on the special use permit hearing, but I've got comments on that as well. And I think also to speak towards the high-density, the cluster of high-density residential uses right there, again, that is really atypical from what I've seen. I appraise subdivisions in housing, and generally, you'd have more of a mix of, you know, low to medium to high-density in an area, so you can have good synergies. A lot of areas are really working hard to do these places where you can have one neighborhood that kind of incorporates all together, where, you know, you have folks who might start off in the townhomes or the apartments, move to towns and or single-family homes later. Areas that would cluster with a lot of high-density residential in one area would wind up really making for, maybe not the most ideal location for the occupants. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I guess Tommy's the next person in line.
Thank you. Let's hear it from Mr. Cleveland.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Tommy Cleveland. My address is 4141 Laurel Hills Road in Raleigh. I'm a... I'm a licensed professional engineer here in North Carolina. My day job is at NC State at the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. We were known as the Solar Center for a long time, and I've been working there and working with solar energy for, for 10 years. And I've been asked to speak just a little bit about the technology and any health or safety concerns that, that might be, somebody might have about this site. And I'll speak much more about this at the special use portion of the hearings. I want to speak briefly about the technology that's going to be there. It's a, a very passive use of land. It's solar panels on fixed metal racking, so there's no moving parts. There's essentially no, no sound coming from the, the system, and it just sits there and turns sunlight into electricity. That electricity is put out to the grid as it's produced. There's no batteries or any storage on site. There's a lot of positive environmental aspects of, of solar is replacing electricity that's polluting to our environment. There's, there's no emissions from the site, and there's nothing about the system that would endanger anybody's health or safety in the area. I'm glad to answer more questions, but I don't want to spend more time on this than, than needed at this time. It's a technology that's been in the field for a long time and really well-understood and many examples of it across the state and the world.
Do we have Mr. Clark, the property owner?
Good evening. I'm William Clark. I'm the landowner. Live at 213 West Beale Road, just north of town. I rise in favor of the project, of course. We've owned this tract of land a long time. Over 220 years we've farmed it, and I just want to share with y'all, if this project doesn't go through, we'll probably just keep on farming the land. I wanted y'all to know that we really don't have any desire to develop it. We're just trying to keep it intact because it, the tract does mean a lot to us. I think my great-great-grandfather purchased it in 1795 with silver dollars. So, and some of you in the room here may even be related to some of the same people that I'm related to. So the land means a lot to us, and we think this is something that's passive and it's good, and if it wasn't good for the town and area and for us, we wouldn't want it on the land. And that's really all I had to say. These gentlemen explained it much better than I could, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Wallace, and I will conclude quickly. Your next slide. One of the benefits for the town directly would be anytime you improve property, you typically get an improvement in your property taxes. This particular piece of property is not in the town limits currently. It's in your extraterritorial jurisdiction. The property owners have indicated that they would, if this rezoning and the special use permit goes through, they will submit a petition for voluntary annexation so the town can benefit from the increased tax base. As you, as you're probably well aware, the legislature really, back a couple of years ago in 2011, they really restricted involuntary annexation. So voluntary annexation is about the only way you grow anymore, and these landowners are willing to do that if, for, you know, and, and thanks for the town being willing to support this project. I've done a little, you know, just a what-if on the property tax. Of course, for the town of Nashville, all of your property tax you would get off this particular site would be new because you're not getting any now. And you'd get approximately $850 a year in, in property tax. That's assuming that it's, it's currently zoned agricultural and it's in the agricultural program, so that will go away. And, you know, the county tax department may decide to reclassify it or up the value, given that it's a different use now. So this is just on the current use, so you could net even more than that. The, the real big number is the approximately $50,000 per year on personal property tax that you will get as a benefit of the $9 million investment in the actual solar equipment. That's taxed at the same tax rate as real property. Now, of course, you know, that, there'll be a high, high watermark on that at the end of your first year because just like any business equipment, it starts to depreciate. And so, you know, that number will go down over time, but, you know, for, I'm not sure what your, what your total town budget is, but usually for most municipalities, you know, a $51,000, you know, bump in, in property tax a year can go to some really good projects. You know, it could potentially fund, you know, another police officer or something like that. So then for Nash, Nash County, they'll hit one-time benefit of about $2,500 from the clawback from losing the agricultural exemption, and then it'll be about $1,000 a year for them in real property tax, again, assuming it stays at the same classification. If the county decides to up it, that could increase. And then the county will get about $60,000 a year, at least initially, in the personal property tax for the equipment. So well over $100,000 in new taxes for Nashville and Nash County. So we, we feel like that, you know, with the combination of this being, you know, environmentally friendly project, as Mr. Kirkland alluded to, you know, that in his opinion, there's no harm to adjoining property owners, and with these benefits, we feel like that this is a good project for your consideration. Mr. Wallace is going to hit the next slide there. One back, sorry. You know, just to highlight, you know, as, as you heard from Mr. Cleveland, it's safe, no noise, no emissions, no environmental issues. It'll be a good neighbor. We'll show you in the special use permit hearing about the site plan and the extensive screening. You have a, you know, kudos to you. You have a very good ordinance. You, you have all the basics covered about requiring screening, and we intend to fully comply with that so that this will be well-screened from the road and from, from the neighbors. It's positive economic impact for the community. It's, as I said, a $9 million capital investment. There'll be some construction jobs and some maintenance jobs that are related to building this project and then taking care of it. Increased tax base, again, I've gone over that. In summary, we feel like that if the town of Nashville is, is interested in having a solar farm, this is about the only place you can do it, based on our research. There's really, you know, your industrial land is, is not suitable for it for various reasons related mostly to, you know, how far away it is from the substation. And we also feel like that at least over the term of this lease, which is at max 40 years, there'll be, you'll have plenty of land to grow. You won't be constrained. So we would ask you to consider these new things that we've brought forward to you, and hopefully we'll come back next week and be able to ask you to approve it. Happy to answer any questions from any of our folks.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. That's quite ample for our public hearing. Does the council have any corrections on this issue? Planning Board have any questions? If not, we'll...
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have one question.
Yes.
The, the lot, the property itself consists of 37 acres, but you only need 25. And I know our orders had certain buffers or restrictions that keep you, you know, hedge, hedge your eyes away, but as far as actual acreage itself, will this project be shifted to one side or the other? Or will the 25 acres you're using on 37 acres plot, is it going to be put in the very center with equal buffer landlines all the way around?
Yeah, so one thing that, that, to Brian's credit, that he's done very well for y'all is he's asked for a 100-foot buffer. That is the second-largest buffer in the state, in the counties that we've used, the, the only other one being Johnson County, which is 150-foot. So yeah, we're going to be in the center of the property excluding that wooded area that's in the very back. You know, we're staying away from that a little bit due to shading during the sun hours. But other than that, we're, we're keeping the 100-foot back plus. We have a fence line, and then typically we, we keep 20 to 25 feet beyond that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will go to our planning board, and we'll... Okay, the third item is a special use public hearing. It's an evidentiary hearing on a quasi-judicial issue. To consider a special use request for a solar farm located on property 1139 Old Bailey Highway. The proposed solar farm is approximately 25 acres in size and located on property identified by Nash County parcel number 38001045779. Before we can proceed, since this is quasi-judicial, I have to read the rules for the, for the, for the hearing, and we also have to move forward with oaths and other things. We'll get to that as we move along. Okay, first of all, just bear with me. This is a lot of words here. It said, it says, "A special use permit requires an evidentiary hearing on the application, which will be heard by the council acting as a quasi-judicial board. The purpose of the hearing is to gather legally acceptable evidence in order to establish sufficient facts to apply the applicable ordinance. The purpose is not to gather public opinion about the desirability of the project. Council should not discuss or receive information about the merits of the case from the parties or members of the public before the hearing. All testimony before the council must be sworn testimony. All persons wishing to speak on this matter must be sworn in. Applicants may be elected to be represented by legal counsel. The applicant has the burden of producing sufficient substantial competent and material evidence for the council to conclude that the criteria of the applicable ordinances have been met." The procedure for the hearing, there's a two-hour time limit for the hearing. At the conclusion of the two-hour time limit, the council may take one of the following actions. One, extend the time limit and continue with the public hearing. Or two, table the item until the end of the meeting at which time the hearing will continue. Or three, refer the item to the next council agenda meeting at which time the hearing will continue. The procedure for the hearing for this case is as follows. Anyone who wants to speak at the quasi-judicial public hearing should sign with the town clerk and be sworn in to speak, exception to attorneys representing interested parties. The hearing is open and preliminary matters are addressed. We'll get to that. A staff representative presents a preliminary statement. The applicant is called on to present the argument and evidence in support of the application, followed by those who wish to speak in support of the application. Council members of the planning board may pose questions to the applicant and speakers who spoke in support of the application. Persons opposed to the application are then invited to speak. Council and members of the planning board may pose questions to the persons who spoke in opposition to the request. Both sides are then permitted to question the other side and present rebuttals. The mayor then closes the period for public discussion. The council and the planning board deliberate. In the course of the deliberation, the members of the council and the planning board may ask questions of the staff, the applicant, or others who have testified, but beyond that, additional comments from the floor will be admitted only at the discretion of the mayor. Additional cross-examination rebuttals may be made only on new evidence presented, and then the hearing is closed. The planning board will make a written recommendation to the town council before the next regular council meeting, and the town council will render a decision at the next regular council meeting, which will be Tuesday night. The rules for public speaking are, one, all speakers should speak from the podium. Second, the applicant should present their arguments and evidence to show that the standards of the applicable ordinances have been met as concisely and efficiently as possible. Other speakers should endeavor to limit their testimony to five minutes. The mayor may extend his time limit if the speaker needs more time to present additional evidence. Third, all speakers should address the approval criteria, I'm sorry, all speakers should address the approval criteria and must avoid inflammatory, irrelevant, or repetitious testimony. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to speak about general matters for the group. Fourthly, speakers may introduce exhibits only to support their testimony at the hearing. Letters from individuals who do not appear at the hearing and petitions are considered uns sworn testimony or hearsay and cannot be considered by council. Sworn affidavits will be accepted. All speakers should ensure that their testimony, one, is relevant to the criteria, two, consists of statements and facts about which the speaker can personally testify, and not statements or words of others who are not testifying, and three, is not speculative opinions or generalized objections without supporting facts. Six, only speakers who are qualified as experts in the appropriate field should testify about, one, how the use of the property in a particular way would affect the value of other property, number two, how the increase of vehicular traffic resulting from the proposed development would pose a danger to the public safety, or three, other matters that would require separate testimony are the rules of evidence. And seven, all speakers should direct their testimony to the criteria that must be met for the particular application. For this special use permit approval, I'm sorry, for this special use permit approval, the criteria are, A, will not materially endanger public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved; B, use meets all required conditions and specifications; and C, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the use is a public necessity; and D, location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformed with the plan of development of the town. In all that said, we will start the hearing after we get the speakers sworn. Those persons who wish to speak for this and against this, would please come forward. See if I've got everyone spoken. If you want an attorney, you're beginning to imagine... If you are speaking against this, I'm concerned...
No, he's our...
Oh, I'll catch you.
Well, why don't you go ahead and be sworn in?
Yeah, everybody, everybody be sworn in. Make sure I've got everybody's names. I've got Michael Wallace. I've got Chris Crockett. And I've got Tommy Cleveland. I've got Mike Fox. I've got William Farm. So if all of you guys will come forward, if you put your hand on there, if you put your hand on that, this is... And ready, and ready, Mike. Pete, after me. I solemn swear...
I solemn swear.
...that the testimony I'm about to give...
The testimony I'm about to give.
...will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So that we got it. You do it, sir. Let the record show that these are due to sworn. And then our hearing is going to start at 7:50, and will continue for two hours if necessary. We hope not. All right, now, the first thing we need to do at this point in time is, we've done all the preliminaries, is that we need a, a staff representative to give us a preliminary statement. Brian, can you do this for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll be brief. At this point, we're well aware of the site. This will be a 25-acre solar farm request on the particular site that was just covered in the rezoning. Staff has reviewed the application. The application is complete. The only thing that would need to be given to staff if approved is a letter of credit for the decommissioning, which can take place at a later date. But you do have a complete application, and feel free to act on it.
Okay. Thank you. With those preliminaries stated, we will now move to the person who are the proponents of the issue. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike Fox, again, with Tuckleduggins representing the applicant, and, and maybe the most welcome thing I say all night is I can't conceive that we would take two hours to go through our presentation, so we'll, we'll try to be very brief. But as you know, by law, we do have to present evidence to support each of the findings you have to make. So some of the stuff you may have heard before, but we've, we've got to do it. I would refer you to the booklets that, that we've handed out earlier, and if you recall, tabs six and seven were for the rezoning, so you can ignore those for purposes of this hearing. We'll focus on tabs one through five. I'll briefly walk you through what they are. Tab one is, is the site plan, a little larger than a regular piece of paper, so that may help if there are questions. And Mr. Wallace is going to come up and talk a little bit about the particulars of the site plan. If you have questions about buffering or why we've done what we've done, he'll be able to answer that for you. Tab two is some background information on Sunlight Partners in the event that you want to know a little bit more about the company. Mr. Wallace will make a very brief statement about Sunlight, but feel free to ask him more. Tab three are some representative photos of, of solar farms. We've deliberately chosen to take pictures of farms that, you know, did not have any screening, so you could actually see the farm. If we took a picture of a bunch of trees, it might not help you very much. Tab four is the information and materials from Mr. Cleveland, who you heard from in the other, in the other hearing. which should qualify him to be an expert in, in solar energy and, uh, the focus of Mr. Cleveland's presentation, he's got a little PowerPoint behind it he'll walk you through is, so that you understand what the technology is, and he's going to address the questions about whether or not there's any harm or potential health issues or any danger to the public. His opinion, he'll give you his opinion, but I'll give you a preview. He, he's going to say that it's safe, in his opinion, and it's a well-tested technology. Uh, the next tab, tab five, is Mr. Kirkland's information, and, uh, you heard from Mr. Kirkland in the earlier hearing as well, uh, and he has been asked to do an, to do an opinion, a study, to determine if placing a solar farm on this location would, uh, harm the property values of any adjoining properties. And, uh, he can talk you through how he looked at that question, and he will give you his opinion that, uh, it will not harm the property values of the adjoining property owners. Mr. Kirkland will also address another issue that you have to consider, which is whether or not the issues would be in harmony with the area and your plans for that area. And he will talk a little bit about, you've heard some preview of this, but about where he typically sees solar farms, where they've been already put in, and what's typically around them, and he will give you his opinion that this will be a harmonious use for this area. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of me, and if you don't have any questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wallace to come up and talk about sunlight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Um, so, Michael Wallace, Sunlight Partners. Uh, so let me talk a little bit about the site plan, if I may, which is under tab, tab, I guess it's under tab, uh, tab one on this one. So Clayton Solar, again, to kind of quickly go back, uh, Clayton Solar is on an existing substation, the only substation that would allow solar in your area, putting the queue back in 2014, uh, which provides it a spot on that substation's feeder. So, we talked a little bit about the things that we look for when we, when we look for a solar farm, and, and again, we're looking at a couple of things. What's the land look like? What's the profile? Is, is the topo pretty good from a standpoint of pretty flat? That, and this site proves to be pretty flat. It's very dry, you could take your vehicle out there most of the time and ride through the field, so it's a good spot for us to, to place our solar panels. The second thing on this site that we look for is what's the surrounding areas and the neighborhoods? Um, you know, for this particular use, you have farm fields around, which is good for us, because that typically means, um, that we don't have to worry about housing, uh, which can sometimes be a complaint from the aesthetic point of view. So for Sunlight, one thing that I think we do better than anybody in the state of North Carolina for solar development is, we make sure that we have a, a buffer around our entire site. So you can see, we call a, a 25-foot buffer across this site in any area around the property, so you would not be able to see it from any existing properties. That's important. So we do not want people to see our sites. We want them to stay back and stay hidden, not only from an asset value to protect our assets, but also from an aesthetic value. We, we don't want people to know it's there, we want it to be just life as usual. So you can see, we've got three inverters on the property. We've got a road that comes down the middle to service those inverters. You're going to have a service personnel there. With today's technology, everything will be, uh, be run across fiber, so we can sit in our offices, we can know how the solar farm is running. Uh, if we have any issues with any of the inverters on any of the phases, it'll notify us. We'll notify our O and M provider, who will go out and see what the issue is and take care of it. Um, so, long story short, you'll have somebody there once every six weeks to eight weeks. Uh, we will have to keep up with the landscaping. Landscaping is typically done by companies in the area, so those jobs go directly to the Nash County area, because they're there on-site, they can keep track of, uh, the trees that are planted, make sure the grass is cut, make sure everything as-is. Um, and then the other thing we'll typically do if the, if the fire, fire department asks for it, is a, a lockbox, so they can get into the property and inspect anytime they want it. So, this particular property is well-suited for solar, uh, we have no environmental issues, no wetlands, predominantly flat. Again, the substation will handle it, which is very important. That's, that's the main goal, right? If the substation can't take it, then, then the project's shot from the beginning. So, this project, the substation will allow that, and then we feel like we've, we've properly buffered it, so it cannot be visible, uh, from the adjoining property or landowners. So, I take, happy to take any questions on solar or solar farms, or, you know, Sunlight Partners has been doing this for four or five years in North Carolina, uh, 425 megawatts and counting, uh, going strong, so, uh, somewhere around 80 or 90 sites going strong across the entire state, so, uh, yeah.
Do you want to count, do I have any questions? Do I have any questions?
Thank you.
Good evening again, I'm Tommy Cleveland. I'm here as a consulting engineer, but as I mentioned previously, my, my day job is at NC State University, where I'm at the North Carolina Clean Energy Technology Center. I've got undergraduate and master's degree in mechanical engineering in, with a focus in energy, and I'm trying to find the section where I've got a presentation and some images I can show you, but I'm going to talk through what the technology is. Looks like it's behind tab four in your book. You can see more of my resume there at, at the front in an affidavit, so if you flip through those pages, you'll get to a, a presentation with a picture of some folks standing in a solar farm. And I'll try to walk through this quickly, but want to show a little bit about the technology used in this site, and, uh, address any possible concerns of, of health or safety folks might have. There's a, a slide on the Clean Energy Technology Center and some of the things that we do. And then the next is a picture of a typical five-megawatt solar farm, as is proposed here. So you can see the components. Mike pointed out the, the inverters. The bulk of the field are just racks of panels that, that don't move, and every so often, you've got a, a concrete pad with a inverter or transformer on it, which you can see on the, the site plan, there's, there's three for this project. And that's where the, the DC electricity coming from the panels is converted to, to grid sinks, uh, AC electricity. The little transformer that's on each, each of those pads increases the voltage to the, the voltage in the lines that are running along the, the road there, so that the power coming off the system is able to, to connect with and merge with the existing power on the, the Duke Energy lines. Uh, and that's really as, as simple as the, the, the sites are. Now, there's, there's no batteries, there's no energy storage, just as the sun shines, it produces electricity that, that goes on the lines. The next, the next image shows a breakaway of what's in these panels, or the industry, industry calls modules. Almost all the weight there is, is glass and aluminum. They're a, a very durable product with a 25-year production warranty. There's a couple of layers of, of clear plastic material, and then the cells are silicon cells. Silicon is, is literally refined from sand, it's refined from quartz sand, that was a, a very benign material with no health, health concerns or toxicity concerns from the silicon cells. The next image shows a little more detail of, of how those cells work, uh, creating the electricity from sunlight. And the next few images show this project's going in a field, and you can imagine how easy they are to take out as you look through the, the construction, the racks, there's, there's vertical posts that are pounded into the ground, uh, and at the end of the life of the system, those panels can, those posts can be pulled out of the ground, just the reverse of that process, putting them in. The only concrete on-site are the, the three pads where the, the inverters are placed. The next image shows the aluminum racking that goes on top of those, those posts. There's a lot of value in the, the materials here, so it's certainly at the, um, financial advantage of, of the owner of the system at end of the life to remove this equipment and, and get the salvage value out of the, all the metal, uh, the copper and steel and, and aluminum in, in the site. And just another photograph of closer to ground level, what a typical arrangement looks like. An aerial view on, on the next picture, showing a, a 20-megawatt site, the Apple installed, outside of their data center in the states. And then the concluding slide has got a, a few points concluding why, uh, it's my professional opinion that, that this site and this technology would not have any negative environmental or health or safety impacts, uh, on the community or, or on the neighboring area. You see widespread support of, of solar from business community as well as environmental community, and there's no emissions from the, the technology, nothing's coming off into the air, the, the water to be of concern. The power it is producing is meaning that there's less natural gas burned than another power plant, and therefore reducing those many emissions that, that come from the, the natural gas. So, it's a cleaner energy. A common concern is environmental or electromagnetic fields, EMF. There's, there's no EMF that, that leaves the, the site. There's some EMF produced by the inverters, that they're placed internal to the site, and those fields diminish rapidly, so that, that EMF doesn't leave the, the fenced perimeter of the site. And finally, this technology has, has been out in the field for over 40 years, so, there's not going to be any surprises when these panels are, are 10 years old or, or 20 years old.
Take a second. Go ahead. Take a second. 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 Take a second.[1372.41] Yeah. 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 My, my name is Rich Kirkland. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in North Carolina. I'm also an MAI through the Appraisal Institute. I was asked to look at Clayton Solar as far as the potential impact on adjoining property values, as well as look at the question of harmony of use. I've actually been looking at this question for solar farms across North Carolina for the last four or five years. And during that time, I've visited over 200 solar farm sites. I've been quantifying what kind of uses there around them. And I guess if you want to follow along, my report's behind tab five. And on the first page, you can see where I've just broken down the adjoining uses currently, residential agricultural. And on the next page, you can see an aerial map that kind of breaks down where everything is. One, one thing to note on the aerial map is that the, the existing trees on the property, that within that 100-foot buffer, they all have to be maintained. And specifically, I, I know that Mr. Bachelor spoke before, his property is actually screened by existing woods that are back there, and those, that 100-foot buffer will be maintained back there and along the eastern property line. But just like I looked at this property and I identified all the parcels around it and quantified it, I've done that with all 200 of these solar farms I've gone and visited. And I'll go into those details a little bit, but in that process, I've been looking for match pairs or paired sales. In the appraisal world, that's really how you test for an impact on value. It, it's very simple in theory. You look for a property that has, is two properties that are identical in every way, except for that one difference you're testing for, in this case, adjacency to a solar farm. Again, in theory, that's very simple. In practice, it can be very hard to find that. In this case, I was actually found a, a textbook example of this. There's a solar farm, the AM Best Solar Farm in Goldsboro. That solar farm was actually built next to an ongoing development, later phase of a subdivision, the Spring Garden subdivision. So there's home sales that are happening before the solar farm was announced or built, and then there's home sales that happened after it was built. So you've got a really good before and after. There's also homes that back up to the solar farm that were sold after it was built, and those down the street that are not backing up to the solar farm. And you can look at all those and compare them back and forth. Same price for the same floor plan, same price per square foot for the same size house, same style house, whether it's before or after the solar farm was built, or whether it backs up to the solar farm, or is down the street away from it. There's some images of that and the, all the details on that, starting on page five in my report. You can see the overview of the home plans that were being built there. And page six and seven kind of goes through and shows how that all matches up. But you can get multiple match pairs looking at those, and they're showing no impact on value. I went and I talked with homeowners out there. I walked and knocked on the doors for the folks who back up to the solar farm and talked to them about any issues one Saturday. No, no issues expressed. I do note that there's some pictures I've got on page eight, shows the last lot that was built out there. And when I went out there and took that, I guess this was in September of last year, there were multiples of locations where I could see up against the landscaping that were adjoining the solar farm, where they had like picnic tables or little tables and chairs sitting out there. So there, there was not hampering their enjoyment of their backyards in any way. And again, the sales prices were not impacted. Property owners didn't express any concerns. I also talked to the broker and developer team who were selling those, and they said it had no impact on how quickly they sold out the homes. So it had no impact on how quickly those homes sold. There's been one resale, one of the homes that backs up to the solar farm. It's sold in 2013, straight from the builder, and then it sold again on the market late last year. It showed typical appreciation around 2% to 3% appreciation over the time period. So again, it's showing no impact on appreciation for homes in that area either. This is a great textbook example because, and I say textbook because there's no adjustments. These are identical homes, same floor plan, sold for the same price. So this is a really great set of match pairs. I've got a couple other sets of match pairs that are included in here, including looking at agricultural land adjoining solar farms. And they all consistently show no impact in value. Since I've written this report, I've actually found another solar farm looking at and writing up match pairs for that. And they have multiple homes that are selling and resold since 2012 next to a solar farm, again, showing no impact on the appreciation rate on those homes. So looking, looking at the data and the sales I'm showing here, I, I find no basis for an impact on value. The, and, and it's kind of consistent when you look at, I, I do this type of study for a lot of different property uses. I, I've looked at wells, I've looked at, excuse me, water towers, wastewater treatment plants, solid waste facilities, a number of different uses, and it's the same format. But when you look at different things that do show negative impact, they generally come in a hierarchy. There's, the, the thing that has the biggest impact on value is hazardous materials. That always has the biggest impact on adjoining property values. And there's no hazardous material situations here with a solar farm. Next on the list is odor. Odor is really something you can't screen or block out. And so when you're looking at other uses, you know, solid waste, poultry, you know, different uses like that can have a bigger impact on value because you can't do a lot about it. It's there. Going down the list, noise. There's no noise associated with a solar farm that I've ever heard. I've visited a number of sites. I've never heard anything at the fence line of any sort, and certainly not to a level that would disturb neighbors. A single-family home will generate more noise than this just from their heat pump on their house. Going down the list, after that, you've got stigma, that's generally more associated with, say, adult establishments or other uses that maybe aren't desirable. Generally speaking, people are very positive towards solar, and there's no stigma associated with it. And the last category is appearance. Appearance is that negligible thing that is really hard. A lot of times where people are concerned about appearance. It's, it's, it potentially falls in the static of normal real estate levels. When you look at appearance, you're really looking at things like wa, not wastewater, but water towers, billboards, things of that nature, things that are there. Those are things I can measure and find impacts. But when you're looking at something like a solar farm, the, the panels are only about eight feet off the ground, they're easily screened, and again, it's, it's essentially the appearance factor is easily addressed through screening. And again, match pair data shows no impact on values. So again, it's my professional opinion that has no impact on adjoining property values at this site. And furthermore, looking at the harmony of use, I, I know I mentioned this earlier, is that when I go and I look at all the stats around solar farms in North Carolina, they are pretty much being located in areas like this where you have agricultural and residential uses in close proximity to each other. This is the type of place they're located. They're, there's, a, a small minority of them are located in industrial areas. In my report on page 15, you can see a breakdown. I've got about 173 different solar farms broken down showing the adjoining uses. Whether you look at it by acreage or by parcels across North Carolina, you're looking at about 4% to 5% are located in industrial with it, excuse me, not necessarily in industrial areas, but with even a single industrial adjoining use. And I've also broken that down, looking at just the solar farms in the coastal plains of North Carolina. It's still a very similar ratio breakdown. And then when I break it down, looking just at the solar farms in Nash County, again, it's a very similar breakdown with mostly being residential agricultural. So it's also my professional opinion that this is a harmonious location for a solar farm. This is where I would expect to find a solar farm in North Carolina. And if you were going to flip through the remaining page of the report, there's just a, a, a couple of examples of solar farms where they're being located adjoining residential uses. I, I've just included a couple here. I literally could put 100 pages of these in here. I've just got a couple just to show you. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go further in detail, anything you'd like to hear. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I just had one brief request that you and the planning board admit our written material as part of the record.
What I wanted to ask is that Brad question. You have two affidavits in here. If I can find them. One from, uh...
It should be one from Mr. Cleveland and Mr. Kirkland.
And Mr. Kirkland, yes.
We routinely include...
Are these the affidavits you want to submit for evidence?
As well as their reports. We routinely include those in the event if Mr. Cleveland had car trouble and was not able to come here tonight to testify to you in person, we would at least have his affidavit. But since he's here and, and testified in person, he's essentially said everything in the affidavit. So whether you admit that or not is, is fine with us.
Okay. Before we go further, I need to ask our lawyer a question. Liz, would you, you come here just a second, please? I've got, I want to show you something. I want to see if this is... Oh, would you? This one is a copy. This one. 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 The question I was asking, so you'll know, is that the affidavits in here, some were original, some were copies. I want to make sure that the copies have the same weight as the originals. So it's okay for her, as you've testified to all these other many things, so we're good.
Great, thank you.
And we will submit this to the planning board for their consideration and, and so on.[1464.41]